At two o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a special commissioners court meeting for the county of Starr. It's Thursday, two o'clock, September 30th. Let the record show we do have quorum, everyone being present. If anyone would please stand for the president.
The Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the United States, one nation, united, indivisible, indivisible, in every justice, for all.
Okay. I'm going to take care of some house cleaning before we go on to the audit, but we do have to request for public audience, Mr. Ramirez and Mr. Villarreal, whoever wants to go first.
Thank you, Judge. Good afternoon, Attorney General, Attorney Commissioner. And then, the reason I signed up for the public forum was because I don't know if y'all have an opportunity to speak to you with reference to item number three of the agenda, which is the audit. I don't know exactly whether or not this item is going to be taken up today. My understanding is that the audit is not ready yet and is not ready for, to be sent to the clearinghouse. I wanted to let you know that we did talk to, my grant writer did talk to Mr. Juan Rodriguez from the executive, he's the executive director for the South Texas Development Council. He did tell us that anything short of the full audit being sent to the clearinghouse will not work with reference to grants. Our grants will not be awarded by anything short of the full audit being sent to the clearinghouse. He also mentioned that this was an issue that the city of La Guayaquil had a couple of years ago, I think Mr. Perez was there, may have been there when the city had it. They tried to submit basically some managerial letters in lieu of the complete audit, those were shot down. So, I know that we may have been discussing in the past some kind of, something to submit in lieu of the full audit, to be certified by the clearinghouse. My understanding is that our grants are going to go down the drain unless the full audit is submitted. And this is somebody who knows what they're talking about, Mr. Rodriguez. I've got some questions that I hope the court will, the commissioners court will entertain and the auditor will entertain. Is number one, who has the auditor reached out to over the last few weeks to get guidance on how to expedite this? I know there was some discussion about submitting something in lieu of the complete audit with grant managers. I'd like to know if that was done and what kind of guidance was given. Because I will tell you this, starting tomorrow, I have a problem in my office, I don't have any money. Starting tomorrow, we basically have no funds from grants. And let me give you an example, we have been awarded these grants, but we cannot activate the award and we cannot be given these grants until the audit is submitted. We have been awarded $58,399.60 for the Crime Victims Center. That has been awarded, but it's not active because of the vendor hold and the fact that we don't have an audit submitted. $391,347.87 to the Crime Victims Center also has been awarded, but not active because of the lack of a single audit. $550,000 Border Security Program Dean's Office also been awarded, but not active because lack of a single audit. $887,146 from the Region Three Border Prosecution Unit also has been awarded to us. It is not active, we cannot activate it or use the money because of lack of a single audit. $56,345.54 for the Violent Crime Prosecutor Program also has been awarded to us. We cannot use it, it's not activated because of the lack of a single audit. $70,000 for the District Attorney Testing of Forensic Evidence Grant that has also been awarded to us that we cannot use because we don't have a single audit. We can't accept it. And $3,795 for the Body Armor Grant that we applied for and were given, that's also been awarded to us, but we cannot activate it or use it because of the lack of a single audit. All in all, my office will, starting tomorrow, be losing $1,517,033.94. In addition to that, and this is just, this is not collateral damage, this is real damage. We're talking about having to lay off prosecutors, having to lay off staff, having to affect tens or scores of families that need their employment in my office. Not only the employees, but their spouses, their children. So, I don't know exactly whether or not item number three is going to be approved, whether or not we do have an audit ready to go and to be certified, but starting tomorrow, we get affected in my office. I will also tell you that these figures and these grants will be lost, we have 45 days to accept these grants. If we don't accept them within 45 days of their award, and they've been awarded to us, then we lose them completely. So, I just don't know, I know that we've talked about this a lot, I know I've been invited to and participated in many meetings about this audit. I've become very frustrated with the excuses that have been given. I've become very frustrated with the seemingly lack of urgency by some of the people who are in charge of this and the attitude. This is a lot of money, these are a lot of families and people affected, and I don't know exactly, I feel very, very helpless because I have no way of making this happen. And I just wanted to let you know that, that this is a very, very serious situation, not only for law enforcement, my office, but for families in our community who depend on these jobs and families who depend on law enforcement, victims who depend on law enforcement from our office. I know that all of you will be affected, I know the Sheriff's Department will be affected, I think everybody across the county is affected. So, just wanted to say that because I don't know what's going to happen with item number three, but hopefully we have some good news on item number three. That's all I wanted to say.
But you understand that this not, we're not to blame the commissioners court, the judge because of this thing going on, you're aware of that?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, thank you.
I am, and you know, the judge has been kind enough to invite me to several meetings where we discussed the fact that this audit is so late. In fact, today was the deadline for 2020 audit.
Yeah, we're three years behind.
And we've gotten further behind. Regardless of what anybody says, from what I can gather, we've gotten further and further behind as time has gone on. So, all I wanted you to know is that how we're affected, and I know that y'all are affected also, and I know that all of you want the same thing that I do, which is to get this done. I just didn't know what kind of action is going to be taken on number three. Hopefully, it's an announcement that the audit is ready, and if it is, then great, but if it isn't, we've got problems.
But if it's not ready, we can't take an election, period, you know?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ramirez, let me, let me just try and, and it's more for the public than anyone else. As Commissioner Garza mentioned, the audit and the auditor's office is directly under the district judges. The commissioners court has absolutely no jurisdiction or authority over the audit. We have been trying, I know the judges have been trying hard. In fact, last week, the district judges and myself met and we talked to a firm out of Corpus that hopefully will come in, I think they talked to Mr. Perez, will come in and they're going to try and expedite last year's budget so that, because we need it before December. And, you know, so our backs are to the wall, we're doing everything we possibly can, we, I mean the commissioners court, to solve this problem. However, again, not to repeat over and over the same thing, but we can only do so much, you know, we, in county government, that's our checking balances. You know, the auditor's office keeps us in line, we have absolutely no say for them, the district judges, you know, it's how government has their checking balances. And it's a good system, you know, I'm not complaining about the system. What I'm trying to say is that we're doing everything we can because as Mr. Ramirez mentioned, Starr County depends a lot on federal and state money. If we don't get it, we are in deep problems, and this is why it's been so urgent. Hopefully, we'll hear some good news. My understanding is that we're supposed to get the single audit report today. Once we get the single audit, that is what will, I guess, allow the funding agencies to get us off vendor hold and we can receive the money. And the reason we had the meeting at two o'clock is because as soon as it's presented and hopefully it's good and approved, we will ad hoc-lically mail this thing to all the funding agencies today. Today's our drop date date. If we don't get them in today, we're in trouble. So, you know, and again, we'll find out shortly. If you all would like, you know, I can go directly to item number three and we'll see how that's going to go.
Yes, sir, and I, and I hope you're right, Judge, and I know that y'all have done everything that you can, I know that you included me in any meeting, so I appreciate that. My understanding, and I hope I'm wrong, my understanding is that the single audit sent to the grant managers will not work. That is what I was told by Juan Rodriguez, the executive director of the South Texas Development Council. He told me, or he told one of my grant writers, told her directly, if that's what they intend to do, that's not going to work. Now, maybe he's giving me bad information, I hope he is, I hope that's been cleared with somebody and that there's verification that that will work. I've been told it will.
If, you know, and again, I'm just repeating what I hear, I don't know absolutely nothing about this thing, but this is what I've been told. If it does not work, Mr. Ramirez, then you and us are in a big fight.
Yes, sir.
Because there's nothing we can do, you know, other than, this is the best thing we can come up with, you know, we ran out of time, the judges are aware, in fact, Judge Jose Rodriguez Garcia sent me a text earlier that as soon as this meeting's over, he wants to know how it went. So, everyone is worried and rightfully so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Your name is appropriate here, will.
I'm going to be.
Okay, I need, you got two, three minutes, what I can talk to you about?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Villarreal, you want to wait until we cover item number three?
I just wanted to bring something real quick to the court's attention, I don't want to take very long.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I don't want to repeat, obviously, what Mr. Ramirez just said, I just, I just wanted to refresh the court's memory. About a month and a half ago, maybe two months ago, there were some items presented to the commissioners court to have a loan, since we had the holes put on the grants, and that loan from the county is essentially a bridge to the end of the fiscal year. Because the fiscal year ends today, a new one starts tomorrow, I just wanted to kind of put into the court's attention that I'm not, I'm not sure if the county's going to want to do another bridge until we, because we're starting a new fiscal year, those funds already are going to be finished, so if we don't have another bridge, essentially, we can't operate anymore.
I certainly don't have a problem for a single bridge, however, is that an agenda item?
Sure, sure, I just wanted to bring it to the court's attention, and obviously, y'all, you know, can't discuss it amongst yourselves, but, but just so y'all can be aware of it, if y'all would like to put in a different item, we could more than happy to come and present what we need to.
If you can give me a cost estimate, just for, what would you need for the next 30 days?
Yes.
And that way, we can present it to the court.
We'll go ahead and do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney General. Okay, I guess, we'll continue on with our agenda, the next thing is the approval of the 18, 19 audit. Mr. Perez, if you want to, or whoever, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Judge. This is the single audit report, but it does include the opinion on the whole financial statements. The, I am presenting the single audit, I will have to because we closed, because it was so close, we were not able to put together the financial statements to be able to present them to you. But if you do go to page one, this is your independent auditor's report, so the audit is complete. It's just that we do not have the financial statements part of the audit to present to you because that takes us about a week to two weeks, and we just closed the audit yesterday. So, that is what's missing from the whole report.
Excuse me, Attorney General Repli.
Yes.
Have you had this kind of circumstances before where you submit the single audit only, do the funding agencies go ahead and release them in their own?
We have never had this kind of situation before, but what I am suggesting for us to do is to, because it is complete, because we are giving you the opinion on your financial statements as well, we will not upload to the clearinghouse, you have to upload your audit within 30 days from the date of approval and the date of the auditor's report, which is September 29th. So, like, we're going to try to get you the financial statements together within a week to two weeks so that we can upload the whole package together.
Okay, what, what happens to the, you know, they're supposed to be in today, that's what?
Right, I believe you're going to submit this, it does have your opinion letter, but it's not going to have the financial statement part of it.
Would that be enough, you know, the question, Mr. Ramirez, would that be enough to get us off the hook for now?
It has, what I looked into, it has been sufficient because it is including the, because your financial audit is done, it is including your opinion on your financial statements, and it's including all the data, all the federal awards section of it. From what I saw in looking into it, it was sufficient, but what will get uploaded into the clearinghouse will be the whole, the whole financial statements. So, it'll be up to each grantor to say, yes, this is sufficient in it. But it does have, because the audit is complete, it's just we did not have enough time to put 92 funds and put together all the financial statements.
Yes, I understand. And again, you know?
How, how can you provide this audit to say that it's a sufficient audit when you have not compiled all the financial statements on it?
So, the way, the way an audit works is we did all our audit procedures, we're already finished, we've already got all the adjustments in, but now we have to put those numbers to present them to you in those statements. So, all the audit, everything is done, the audit is complete, and so, that is why with confidence we can tell you that this is the opinion on it. The, the financial statements are now, so what, when you audit, you have all your numbers and that's what we're checking. Now, it's like you're putting it all together to present it to you, but we've checked the trial balances, we've checked all the numbers. It's just the presentation for me to give you the balance sheet, the net position and the, and the expenditures. But it is, it is done, that's just the presentation of it, and I'm not sure if that's sufficient explanation?
Well, it is, and it is not, because, you know, if we take this audit to the, to that committee, how can they say, well, how do I know it is correct what they're telling you? They haven't seen the numbers, at least for me.
Right, right, it's that our, our opinion is based, because we've audited, so the way the numbers are put together is by trial balances, and our work papers and all our documentation has already, we've already proven that those numbers are accurate. But now, because you're so large, now we have to take all those numbers and summarize them into.
I understand, I have to take it, how, if you think you can convince that committee that those numbers that they're saying are correct, they haven't seen them in paper.
I think what would happen, Commissioner, is that, you know, they're bonded, they're licensed, so if they say it is, then I guess.
So, what is, what is on, that we are, that they look at, is they look at your schedule of federal awards, and that one is included in here. And that's what they are going to look at, most of the grantors want to see what is your schedule of federal awards. That's going to match to your financial statements as far as grant rhythms, because that's what this goes to. You do.
I hope it doesn't work, but in my mind, I, you know, I'm the person that I need to see to believe, you know? You can tell all the ones, but I want to see it. To me, it doesn't make sense, I mean, with all your respect, when somebody tells me something, yeah, yeah, this is here, let me see it. But that's up to them, it's not me, I hope they, I hope they take it.
So, the single audit schedule that falls under the single audit, that one is included, that one is part of the package that we already have?
I understand that, I understand that. But all there is, the people on the, with the grant writer or the grant, this party grant, if that's sufficient there for that, why do you need the rest? I mean, just, well, turn this in and that's it, if that's sufficient for them, why you waste more time, or you waste more time?
I think, I think the composite or the complete audit is more for us to see what the, how the departments operated, where they were in the budget, that they overspent, you know, that, that, I think that's the use of it.
They don't care about that, you know?
I believe, I believe they don't care, I'm not going to say they don't care, they, they do care about the whole financial statements.
They need to know how, how we're operating.
If I may, the audit itself is not just for those agencies, it's for other entities as well, and it's those other entities that I think are going to look at the financial report more so than, than the single audit. We're just saying that as far as granting agencies, the single audit is the part of the audit that they're most interested in, and so, we're hoping that by getting the single audit to them, at the very least, it will buy us the two weeks to get that up to the clearinghouse. Because that is what they're looking for, they're not going, they're really not going to look at the rest of it. And overall, you're getting the opinion letter, you're getting the independent auditor's report that's telling you that everything, well, you got to give that.
I hope you're right, because you're going to tell us otherwise, you know?
Well, Mr. Garza, this time we're in a lose-lose situation. We're in a lose-lose situation.
Oh, of course, of course, you got to go for it, I mean, there's going to be a long time.
I make a motion to approve, Your Honor.
Okay, well, let's, before we go, let's have the discussion, I have a motion in a second, but go ahead and explain the.
Yes, so, what I wanted to go over more than anything with your single audit was, as I mentioned, the first page is your independent auditor's report, and it is an unmodified When the, your opinion, and I know because it's so late, people may understand, well, how can you have an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, right? Well, for it not to be, you had to have material misstatements, you have to have things that have occurred that you could not rely on your numbers. And that's not an issue you have, it's just your issues compiling it, taking care of it, your timing, that's separate. Your numbers are accurate, but it's putting them into the system that's, that's the problem, right? And keeping up and, and getting all your policies and procedures accurately. So, as far as your financial statements, you do have a clean opinion on them because you can rely on your numbers. So, that is what the auditor's report is. The next thing that I just wanted to go over with you is actually, page three and four, and that is the auditor's report on your internal control, and that is where you have findings. You, you do have three findings, and those you can find on, they begin on page eight. And the very first one is your controls for year-end closing of the financial statements, which, this is why we're here, and so, that one is obvious, right? So, that's what the finding is about, is not closing your, your fiscal year at the time that you should. The second one is misappropriation of assets, cash, you did have some fraud that occurred during the year. And then, the third one is accounting of capital assets, which is page nine, and that was, your infrastructure wasn't being accounted for properly, and so, it has been addressed already. And your, your federal award findings did have the finding of the controls of the closing of the financial statements.
Have those been addressed already?
They, they, well, the, the, the closing of the financial statements, obviously, at this point in time, unless you have to finish your September 30th, 2020 audit by December 31st, 2021, or that finding will be in place. So, that means you have three months.
Yeah. And again, for, for public information, you know, like I said, we, we did hire a firm that is supposed to come in and hopefully we'll get this before December.
Yes, you, you have to have your, and that's the issue, is you have to have your accounting, it has to be completed. You know, for an auditor to come in, you need to have that and provide it to them. They need about 60 to 90 days to be able to do their procedures properly. So, to me, we got the final trial balances in July, July and August. So, this is, so, to me, if you're doing July and August, hopefully, you've got 2020 already done. You have, to me, you have, you have to have everything done by October.
Well, what, what this firm is supposed to do, is they're supposed to help our, our internal office to get this stuff ready so we can give to the external audit.
Yes, and you're going to be very close to running into the same problem again, if that's not.
And, and we're aware of that, and we've talked to one of our legislators, that they might need to go to back doors to give us an early 12 extension. But I don't want to say that because I don't want anyone crying their feet, you know, we need to get it done by December.
It, it, it needs to be, so, really, so, the other, the other two items, I believe they did, the response was on page 13, which, the closing of the financial statements, the responses that they expect to have it completed by December 31st, 2021. The misappropriation of assets, that was taken care of, and then the accounting of capital assets, they're, they're requesting a year to make sure and get all of that corrected on your system.
Yes, but, but then, December 31st is not going to cut it, because if we have our end of it done by December 31st, the external auditor's going to need another one, two months to wrap it up. So, now we're looking at March, February, March, before we get it done, that's too late.
Like I said, we are compiling the financial statements, we're going to try our best to have them ready for you to, to bring them by, by the end of next week and later than the following.
If, if you have a date, let's say Friday of next week, if you feel that you might have it done, if you will let me know, I'll call a special meeting for Friday, and, and hopefully you'll have it, if you don't, we'll just postpone our meeting.
Well, we're going to try our best because we do want you to upload everything into the clearinghouse as complete, so we are.
So, would I go ahead and call a special meeting for next Friday? Okay.
Is there any other questions? That was everything from my presentation.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, I do have a motion to approve, and it was seconded by Commissioner Sainz. Any further discussion? Oliver, please, aye. Oppose? Motion carries, and I guess we can ad hocly submit this today. Again, thank you, thank you so much, you know, for all your work and your effort, I know I've been a thorn on your side, but this is, as you can tell from Mr. Ramirez, it's extremely important to us. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We do have another couple of things to, to, I guess, housekeeping. The one, item number four, is the declaration of the surplus equipment, or inventory, I guess, their vehicles. Is there a motion to?
Second.
Moved and second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And item five, I guess it's, I guess same thing, the surplus inventory for Commissioner President One.
Second.
Moved and second, discussion. Oliver, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion carries.